So nothing to call to order. This is our work session. So. Is it Dr. Carl? I'll just turn it over to you.
Well, I think actually the first item we're going to talk about is I'm going to turn it over to Kent. He's going to do. Budget, some budget update and talk about budget timeline and some things like that. So Kent will give it to you. Okay?
Okay, thank you. Go ahead and share my screen here.
Well, and he has their handout in front of of you. So I think I think that's what you're going to go through right now.
Answers yes and yes.
Okay.
So I. You you each have a handout like this and there's some extras up there. I'm gonna go through that. And then. Plan to go back to the April update there. So Julie.
Yes.
Just mentioned there's a handout in front of you that also be projecting it. So I had. Four topics that I listed. To talk about. And they're all sort of intertwined. So I may need to jump back and forth. Between these topics. But I want to talk about the budget timeline and the revenue neutral rate. Cash reserves, what's our our what's appropriate for cash reserves? Where we're heading with that discussion. There's some mill levy information that I want to share. And then I did want to do a quick review of the. April 24 update. David, that's what you'd ask about there. Because we went through that in some detail. Back on the 24th, but really. Didn't have a lot of time for questions. I don't know if you you all have. Had any time to look at that if there's other questions, but I'd like to keep that information. Fresh. I think we ought to spend a few minutes going through that. So just stop me if you have questions or comments. Because this is really information for discussion that we're going to go through here.
Tell me where you're starting.
I'm going to start on page one. That's where I was, I guess. It's actually page two. Which is the Kennedy Budget. Calendar. Make this a little smaller. Not that small. So basically. Our proposal. Is that we. Ask the board to approve. To exceed the revenue neutral rate. As you probably recall from the April 24th work session, we're not actually asking to levy any more taxes. Than we levied last year, which. You know, should that should be revenue neutral. But the definition by statute of revenue neutral. Is that the mill levy cannot exceed last year. So. By. Passing the notice of intent to exceed, if there's some change in the valuation between. July 1, when we we get that in November. Then it would. Protect us from having the actual amount of taxes we asked to be levied dropped in case the. The valuation went down during that time and it's possible for that to happen. It happened last year wouldn't have made a lot of difference. But it does happen. So most, most municipalities and community colleges are passing the revenue neutral rate, even if they. Intend to levy the same amount of taxes. So the timeline under that scenario is that we would ask the board to approve the notice of intent to exceed. At the July board meeting. At the August board meeting. We would pass the notice of hearing and. And hearing. Which is a dual hearing. There's a hearing to exceed the revenue neutral rate and a budget hearing. And then on at the September board meeting, we would ask. For approval of the budget. We had the the budget hearings and approval of the budget. So we have. Another work session in June. I don't know that we're going to have any more budget updates really to share. And I'll be right before we close our books. At the July work session, we could. Present some. And numbers all of it's it's probably better if we're going with the the notice to. Exceed to just do that at the April or excuse me, the August board meeting. Now, for some reason, the board shows not to pass. The notice of intent to exceed on the 11th, then we would need. Not only have a work session on July 26, but it would need to be a special board meeting. To approve the notice of public hearing and we would need to have. Then the public hearing at the August board meeting. There's different statutory timelines depending on how you do that.
Do you know what that rate might be yet, Kent?
Excuse me?
Do you know what that rate new revenue neutral rate might be escalated to yet? Did you already say and I wasn't here?
Well, it's it's the information out. We gave you in. In April and yeah, I'll go through that when we get to that part of the. The. The review here.
Okay.
So. There are no specific questions on that. Go ahead and move on. There's some info. I put together some information. As you know, we've had a. A. Goal for many years. To a ten and a half percent. Unencumbered cash within the operating funds. Ten and a half percent unencumbered cash compared to expenditures. So that's. There's a lot of detail and nuance in that. The operating funds don't include the designated funds. They don't include. The campus life funds, the dormitories and the. The student union so forth. So there's some analysis here I've done of. Butler compared to other colleges. Unencumbered cash. At a couple of different levels. This first. Page here. Which is actually. On page three. This is a comparison of unencumbered cash. For the 19 community colleges. From the KCSBO survey. That's a survey that the business officers do. And there's a note at the bottom. This includes. What we would call. The unrestricted funds, all of the general fund, the post-secondary tech ed fund, adult basic ed fund. Supplemental ed fund and auxiliary funds, which are the residence hall food service and so forth. So in this comparison. We actually show about 68 and this is for the year ended. June 30, 2022. So last year, that's the. The most recent year, obviously, that we have all information for. And for all those funds that I just mentioned, we had actually expenditures. Of $68 million in unencumbered cash of around $28 million. So you can see that that's 41% and that puts us as the sixth lowest. Percentage. With. Thirteen of the 19 colleges having a higher percentage of unencumbered cash. If you look at all of those. Funds together, there's a note at the bottom.
I'm sorry. You know.
Eagles are always good.
They don't irritate people. It's not just some of the other things.
So you can see that this amount that I show up above does include our campus life funds. And for the campus life funds, we had about 4.6 million unencumbered cash. And about 4.7 million of expenditures. So for those particular funds. We have about a 98%. Coverage. And of course, that's probably because we use those funds to save up for facilities needs and so forth. Within the. Campus life funds. So. I want to include that because in the next page then. This would be a comparison of Butler to the other colleges and one college I didn't. Wasn't able to get information on. So I have 18 of the 19 colleges listed here. This is for. The general fund and the PTE fund. So this, the general fund here would include all the designated reserves. That we have, which we don't include when we talk about the operating budget. And the 10 and a half percent goal. So you can see that last year, we were at 37%. If you look at the. Those two funds, the general fund and the PTE. And this is where, you know, we have the majority of our transactions. For the college. And we were at 37% using these. If you look at these funds and again, we were eight lowest out of 18. So kind of in the middle of the pack. So I presented this information because we've had discussions about. Where we want our unencumbered cash to be. And when I get go back over the April 24 update information. I want to take a closer look at what we're showing for the operating funds. At that time, how that compares with the 10 and a half percent. So again, at some point, we do need to have more discussion about what's appropriate for the operating. Or for the our unencumbered cash reserves. I do think it might be best to. Hold that off a little bit till we go back and look at the April 24 information. Next page here. And I think it's page five. Yeah. So what we've looked at here, and this again relates back to the revenue neutral discussion. And decision that you'll you'll be needing to make here in about six weeks or so. Went back and looked at what the actual taxes levied have been. For the last four years and then looking at what we're recommending for. The 24 years. So we have a five-year comparison here with the 24 year being a recommendation. At this time. So in 2020. The college actually levered levy 13,478,192. And this is for the general fund only. This does not include capital outlay. The next year I was reduced to 12,928,138 and we've. Levy that same amount. For the last three years. And in the recommendation that we gave you in April, that's the amount that we have recommended that you levy. For 24. So this lower section here is a what if analysis, what if instead of keeping the taxes the same. We had kept the mill levy the same, the 17.409. And allowed the college to receive additional tax revenue for the change in valuation. And. Can see it. The cumulative total of that would have been 11,899. Thousands, almost $12 million more that we would have received over the past, well, over the past three years. And the fourth year, which is upcoming. If the. If the college had kept the mill levy the same for those years. So again, that's just some information to have in your pocket as we get into those discussions.
And so.
Can I enter for one second?
Yeah.
In 2020, we had 151,000 credit hours. This coming year will have 130 more or less. So that's a 14% drop in students' credit hours. While keeping the taxes the same. I just want that pointed out. We can't continue just to lose and then. You know, have our local taxes be our only remedy. Or have them go up to compensate for whatever we're not doing right.
Yeah, I think that's, you know, it's about a part of the discussion. The, you know, the major portion of our. Enrollment decline has been in our out district students, which. Lowers that. Revenue, obviously, that we receive both in state aid and. And in tuition and fees. I don't I don't believe there's been a significant reduction in our in district students over that time. So the next page. Well, I think at this time, this is some additional information on the next page. The thing I'd like to do on this time is just go back over. We stopped sharing that. And.
Kent, I did have one question on the bottom of this. You know that they're expecting a 2024 valuation increase of 15%. Has anybody told you what they think they're basing that on? Because from where I'm sitting, I I think the values have. Kind of flattened since the interest rates have gone up. We aren't seeing that steep climb anymore, climb anymore. So. Is that a for sure thing or who's throwing that number?
It's an estimate. I got that from Johnson at the county. You know, they this time of year, they look at. The information from the appraiser's office to come up with that estimate. And so this time of year for past several years, that's where I've got my estimate. We'll we'll get. I think in the latter part of June, they'll give us an official estimate. So I pulled up the end. Again, you you may or may not have this document. I know Dave was showing me he had it. I just want to go back over. The information that we have so that we gave you with the preliminary. Budget recommendation in April. So in the the notes page and Julie, this. I think this would go to your question. The. The revenue neutral rate, I anticipate the revenue neutral rate is is actually the mill levy rate. That will give us the same amount of taxes for next year that we levied the year before. So it's dependent on the valuation. So if the valuation would go up 15%, then I anticipate that the revenue neutral rate would be a mill levy of 12.048. Mills. Again, that's information that the county clerk will calculate once they have an official estimate. Of the valuation. And so later on in June, I'll be able to provide that. The official estimates from the county clerk. To you. So. Again, this was a 23 information, the current year information. Then for the. For next year's operating. Budget. And again, I think we've been over. Quite a few times what we mean when I say operating budget, that it's the. The general fund and the post-secondary tech ed fund. Let without any of the designated funds that are part of those. And if you have questions about that in the supplemental information. We detail all the designated reserves and I can go through that if you want to. I don't want to. Oh, to overkill on that because we've we've been through it quite a few times, but I know it's it can be very confusing also.
I do have a. A question. And I'm honestly not sure if I'm even reading this right. But. I understand that you talk about different funds. But I'm. Looking at page 16 of. Well, it's submitted to Butler County Clerk's Office. This year, and I'm I'm just seeing this and I know this has got to include all funds. 2020, 2021. Was 58. 2022 was 68. And then this year, 35.
Yeah, this is a notice of public hearing that we published.
This is the total funds. Total funds, total budget.
Into the total budgeted funds, yes. The 58 here. That would. Of the up of the budget that are listed here. Yes, that's the total. Those are all the funds that are listed here. The only funds that would. When you said budgeted funds, I'm just trying to get the terminology correctly. We have called restricted funds, which have a lot of big. What is called expenditures in fund accounting like for Pell Grants and and things like that. Those are not included here. Okay. But these funds. These funds that are shown here, other than the restricted funds, I believe those are all the cash funds that we have. And we have those detailed in the. In. In the information that we gave you last August.
Right.
In two different places. I just want all those.
Here apples to apples and make sure I'm on right, I'm doing right here. So if I were to look at this sheet, I know these are actuals for the last couple of budget years, right? Those are the those are the funding 58.5. Then 68.7 and then this year 85.0.
Budget for those funds. And as I explained, quite often, every time we have the year in. Or every time we have the legal budget approved, I explain that these numbers include a lot of. Leeway because we budget for what might happen.
Right. This is everything, right?
It's yes. I think in terms of what you're talking about, it's everything. Does not include restricted funds, but I think you're talking about everything but restricted funds.
So the restricted funds would include.
Pell Grants.
Yeah, those are those are those are movable. Almost transient. You never know, right? You never know.
In and out because, you know, technically they're not even our funds. We get them. And we act as the agent to disperse them to the student.
And these, and this number, which why would you say there was such a significant increase? From 56 to 86?
Well, there are two things. From 21 to 22, we had a significant amount of expenditures from earth money. That's the main thing. Plus, we would have had raises in there and there's there's this normal inflation and expenditure. This number, which was the legal budget. Is it includes a lot of things like. Like we budget this, what if we had to spend all of those designated funds at one time? So this is a budget number that exceeds what we'd expect in operations. And we explain that when we ask you to approve the legal budget. So this is not a number we ever intended to get to. We protect ourselves because the the budget statute of the state. If we overspend, the state can actually come in and take that back. So if we have. $4 million set aside for deferred maintenance, we show that entire amount as budget authority. This is budget authority. It's not necessarily what we intend to spend as a budget.
Would you say, how much would you say that's too high?
Well, I could go back and and get those figures. I don't have my my hand. And that we'll we'll look at that again for next year as we go through this and I can. We can go back to last year's and go through that if you really want to.
The reserve that. We talked about last month. I know I added up all those funds while we were sitting here. I came up with. Unencumbered cash at the end of the year of about 20 million. And last year it was 21 and for that, I think that's when COVID hit. So we started getting quite a bit of money. Left over, but you're right. When you talked about earlier, we probably need to establish a bottom reserve. The board probably doesn't need to do that. Now, what I've been looking at other, I've been trying to find out from other colleges what they have. And it looks like it's anywhere from 5 to 15%. Would you agree?
I I think if you would look at. Page. Three and page four, the information I gave you, that's that's what I intended to show you there, where we rank compared to other schools.
Yeah, I understand.
Community colleges.
I was talking about what they hold in reserve.
That is what that's that's their year end. That is their year end reserves. That's what I'm trying to explain to you.
But the only thing I could find at the state, and I thought this was a small amount, was 5%. That you're required to keep. Do you know anything about that?
I don't know. Are you talking about the state is required to keep that because community college?
Requires a minimal balance for.
The state doesn't require, there's no statutory minimum for community college.
Well, not colleges, but. An average for some of the municipalities and everybody budgets. But I know you have to treat.
Yeah, I'm just telling you, this is where we stand compared to other community colleges in cash reserves. Or those funds which I've explained.
Well, I appreciate that.
So. For the. Operating funds, which is what I've shown up here. We are estimating based on the preliminary recommendation that we gave you. That we would end up at about 18% at the end of next year. Given all the assumptions that went into that. That budget. Instructively, we feel that that's probably more where we should be than the 10 and a half percent. Part of that is just to look at at our ongoing payroll and expenditures. The. 10 and a half percent of budget, you can see there's about $6 million, which I think. That would cover two months of our payroll and and we feel that's probably not an adequate place to be. So we want to.
Can somebody move the. The where everybody is on Zoom over to the side so we can see that there we go. Sorry.
So I don't know that. You know, we're not making a recommendation right now, but at some point, we. We think this is. There should be a recommendation to increase. The reserves for the operating fund. Again, the operating fund, this is the part of our budget that has to be sustainable. And. You know, like the deferred maintenance funds, we have a plan to spend those down. Then we have to have a plan also to replenish those funds. So this again is just to provide information. And let you know that we feel that we need to change this. I I. And let you know that we feel that we need to change this, I I. I've heard some. Comments from board members that this is too much, too little. So some point we need to to go there. The other thing I did want to. Talk to you about because you may have. Have heard. This and stop sharing that. And go back. Strong one. There's. Some funds that. Additional funds that we were going to get from the. State or FY twenty four that we were not sure about when we made the. Presentation in. April, so we wanted to. Make sure that you're aware of these funds, they're not funds that actually. We intend to take into the operating budget. So the first amount. Is one point three seven six million of capital outlay funding. There's been some community colleges who have received capital outlay funding over the years. I think your their colleges have merged with the technical colleges at one point or another. This is one-time funding or likely to be one-time funding. You know, if they want to put us on all the community colleges on par. Then I think they may want to look at. Giving us an annual. Piece of this in the future, but it would certainly be much, much less than this amount, so. Right now, we're looking at this as a one-time, more than likely a one-time. Revenue to the college, we plan to put this in the deferred maintenance reserve. At this time. The second piece. About one point four million dollars. Is it from workforce development and it's intended for. Apprenticeships and partnerships, those kind of things for the workforce. This, we're pretty sure is one-time funding. And we're really awaiting guidance on how to account for this, I don't know if it'll go into a restricted fund like a grant fund. Or if it'll come into the general fund, in which case we would probably put it into a designated fund. We just know that we're going to get it and it presents an opportunity and. Tom's going to figure it out, right, Tom?
Kent, on the on the capital outlay funding.
Yes.
What's what's our, just a rough number, what's our balance in the different curve right now? Not not counting this one point, one point two seven, roughly, what do we have in that front right now?
Give me just a second.
Well, you're looking at one of them top outside.
Sure, yeah, that'd be fun.
That also all the community colleges have been given. And I think the technical projects too, a quarter of a million dollars specifically that's in one-time money specifically for the use of. Cybersecurity to either upgrade infrastructure to try to help move. Redundancy to the cloud, do some things like that, it can be used for. Staffing technically because it's not going to be sustained funding, it's just kind of point type of funding, but. We don't know yet how we'll use it here, every institution will will use it probably in different ways. But specifically has to be both this law and some sort of data security or cybersecurity processes or something like that.
Thank you. Of course, on. In the April update. We were estimating at the end of this year to have one point five million in the deferred maintenance. The biggest chunk of that, we had four point seven at the beginning of the year. The biggest chunk of that was for the Simpson projects, which include like the.
HVAC and.
HVAC and the five hundred building that Jim is the biggest single project to come out of there. So. Again. That that really concludes what I put together here, I don't know. If you want to get into these discussions, if you want it. But during, at some point, like the. Well, so we had, we had the revenue neutral rate discussion coming up. Which will have to be decided by the July board meeting. And. You know, one of the issues that always comes up when we're talking about. Tax levies is how much money we have in reserves, so I think those are very intertwined discussions that. Probably are going to have to happen by the time that you consider. The. The notice to exceed the revenue neutral rate in July and obviously in August, when we ask you to. Up with the notice of hearing and then in September, when you actually will approve a budget.
Approximately how many more buildings? Like the HVAC and stuff like that to bring up to.
I mean, the priority list together.
Yeah, there's. Yeah, in your book, David, you have there back in in the supplemental, I think it's S eight, maybe. Or S nine, there's a list of projects that we have right now that we consider the priority projects. And if you want more information on that, we can certainly ask Ireland.
I knew I'd had it someplace, I just didn't know exactly.
Okay.
I think it'd be worthwhile once that money comes in to have Ireland. Reassess that, there's no reason to have that money sitting in our savings account and we're getting it to be able to do capital projects, we ought to be thinking about how we.
I think that, and I think, again, some of the guidelines we don't know for sure, but I think the expectation is that it be spent, be spent.
I don't know, I I really don't know.
We were waiting on some of those final guidelines.
So Kent, when you say the the discussions between the. Yeah. Revenue neutral rate on our cash reserve. Your administration's proposing a deficit budget, right, so the budget we're proposing this year is going to eat into our. Cash reserve necessarily, so to the extent we go. The more we cut tax revenues beyond revenue neutrals is just the more we're cutting into our reserves. And it'd be a be a reserve cut going forward because that's impacting tax revenues in future years.
Yeah, if you kept the other. Other variables and assumptions the same, that's correct.
Anybody have any questions for Kent or comments?
Is is that what we want to do, is pretty much to keep it the same? You know, I I kind of, I kind of listened into Shelby's point of of the enrollment. And I see the twenty five percent decline and no one likes to talk about it, it's the elephant in the room. But. In looking at the data books, which are available online to anyone. Through twenty twenty two. Your net FTE has only gone down twelve and a half percent. And I would have thought it would have gone down twenty five percent, and when I say FTE, I'm talking about full-time headcount. College administrators, teachers, everything full-time headcount, so. You you would think, I guess, if you had a reduction of twenty five percent enrollment, that. The entire headcount would reduce at least twenty five percent.
I don't think it's a one for one type of thing.
What would you think it is? I mean, I'm just being honest, what would you think, is it ten percent, twenty percent?
Well, I'm not better percentage, but I'm trying to say to you is that. You know, in a business model, maybe that's a bit different, but but in higher education. Some of the services you still have to support with the past we have staffed, even though your enrollment's way down, so I don't know that it's a one to one comparison. It doesn't, it doesn't work that way, higher education. We can show additional reductions in the number of course sections that we've had, we can show reductions in the number of adjunct that we've hired. We can show changes in faculty loads that have that have changed because of the enrollment increases as well, so. I don't, I don't know of any educational institution that does a one for one, then they have to comply because.
One for one, I understand, but would you explain?
You just said that there should be a twenty five percent cut.
I would look for that, yes, I would look for that, but if it's not that way in academia, then I think that you just need to explain how they do those totems. How they how they do the differentiation.
Well, part of recognizing is that we can't cut factors. I mean, you can, you can make edits to adjuncts, but we can't reduce, we don't have a provision in our. In our master agreement that allows us to do layoffs.
I understand that.
Well, that's twenty five percent you can't cut.
Okay, but do you have a?
You can't make up that twenty five percent out of them.
And then you.
We already. Solving the core sections will get more decreases when I'm hiring, this will be happening. The faculty, full-time faculty loads are changing. We're reassigning people, we're we're changing job descriptions, looking at when job positions open. Do we need to reassign those and reallocate those to a different problematic area where enrollment is increasing? Tom, Tom has done significant analysis in the academic area, he can show you that there's been a cost savings in academics. Over the last couple of years. Savings and spending, which would be reflective of all changes.
Shelby, just.
It's not just staffing.
If I'm correct, I think when we did the five thousand bills, five thousand million handover. We took seven or eight million out of our reserves and then borrowed eight million. So that's money we spent at a time of. Possible increasing enrollment, which it wasn't, but we invested all that money. While we're in decline. Educare building, we closed Educare and then spent the border for eight hundred thousand dollars remodeling Educare. We're still over McConnell, losing money every year, Wichita State would take that over. And I would still like to mention that last year. In Flint Hills, I would like to see if the board would be interested in telling them. They would like to have the college there, they need to provide us a facility, pretty clear, no. I would not like to pay any utilities to be there, if they truly appreciate us there, they should provide it, and that would save us money a little. I just see a lot of expenses and. And. Just doesn't seem the right way to go, like to Kim's point, it's like. We got all this deferred maintenance, sure, we've got a lot of buildings that aren't had capacity. Before we spend millions of dollars on HTRAX, at least look at consolidation before we're five years down the road and. Hundred thousand credit hours and out of money except for taxes, that's. I think that's a good plan.
I'd also be curious, like, I mean, this chart showing, hey, we we could have, would have maybe had all this tax money that we didn't get. You know, what about how much money has the state inflicted, you know, brought in for COVID funds or whatever else? Because I really have no idea, I've only been on here a year and a half, so I don't know what was given to the college through that time, so. Through all these years where the actual taxes love taxes level has stayed flat. Where's other money come from that wasn't necessarily budgeted for? I. I would just appreciate a more fair representation of, rather than just look at one item, you know. What was cut, what came in that you weren't expecting?
Well, from COVID, we received sixteen million dollars.
More than offset the twelve. That that's just. Yeah, it would be nice to have those.
Have that sound back to the students, right?
Now, that that's where it's the institutional portion, there was like another. Similar amount to when students.
And there and there were restrictions around that, but you couldn't just be used for just being the first. What is, what was the first amount we paid, you know, that we got, no, not that much.
Very small, yeah.
Like that, I mean, there were restrictions around how that money. Spent to start off with, that we spent on technology and things like that. You know, there were a little bit looser guidelines this, the second round of funding. But still with an intent on technology, classroom technology, supporting students' success somehow, and so it wasn't money that. You know, you could necessarily just be put into salaries or put into the general operating budget without some guidelines around. There were specific guidelines and had to be bad to be able to use that, and that's why since those funds were set aside or. Specifically for technology increases or addressing age back, I mean, some of those things we could, we could address because it's about. You know, updated age back for clean air and, you know, air quality kinds of things, we could, we could use some of that funding for salaries for public safety. And for facilities, so we public safety. College health, I think was in there because they were sort of frontline people.
Well, if all if all that money was spent on things that were valid and necessary, even if it was somewhat restricted. I think it's fair to say that it kind of filled a gap that existed between. You know, what the college had and what was needed, and I just think it. If the, you know, if it looks like, okay, that money's drying up and now we're looking at just taxes. And we leave it flat this year, but we're going into our reserves, I just think that something. Needs to happen with regard to, you know, getting enrollment going the other direction. Or it's just, it could get bad quickly in the next few years, and that's, that's the worry.
I think, looking at the, I mean, I would say that probably looking at the BKB, the academic side of the BKB thing will give you a look into. Where we're sitting with revenues and margin in the academic areas for sure, but I. I think your point's valid, I I would say that financially we're strong, I mean, I think that, I think that there's financial stability. Certainly our records indicate that and our history of how we manage our budget indicates that. I don't think that we're going to go bankrupt unless we are ridiculous about the way that we spend our money and don't save our money, and I don't think that's going to happen. Leadership of the board or the administration that's in place, so I don't know that there's a risk that we're going to run out of money. As long as we're careful about how we manage it and how we spend it and how we. You know, use it to fulfill our mission, we can't walk away from our mission, if we walk away from our mission, then it can be a response, college. So. We want to. Punk and walk you through some.
Are you ready? You guys ready for this?
Okay.
Yeah. Okay, so I think the last time we looked at this, this dashboard, we had the twenty twenty one program economic analysis. It's it's up on the screen. Um. What we're going to look at.
Copies we can look at.
Because we're going to look at a few things here. Um. Yeah, I if I wasn't requested to bring physical copies, but I can follow up with that, so what we're going to look at. We've added twenty twenty two as a fiscal year of a summary, this is our, we're going to look at two tabs on this, this report, this is our summary KPIs. Or our. Our. Key learning out our our outcomes for for finances for academics. And then we're also going to look at a course economic tab, and what this is going to show is twenty nineteen, twenty twenty, twenty one and twenty two academic years. Fiscal year, sorry, which is summer of twenty twenty one, fall of twenty twenty one and spring of twenty twenty two, so it's a, it's a summer, fall, spring. Correct me some, okay. All right, so what you're going to see is a couple of tuition choices, so we can look at this financial model from. Just a straight tuition and fees standpoint, and we can also look at it with the added state aid standpoint. So that changes some of the dynamic and I'll go back and talk through some of that. The last time we looked at this report, we had four levels of a cost choice. They've added additional three to this cost choice and we'll kind of go through some of those as well. So the things that I think are most important to look at, at least from a, from an overview standpoint, would be this, these, these lines here, which is the tuition choice. Which is then would be as much the revenue we we generated from tuition. And fees with or without state aid, that's going to change the cost, so this, at this cost choice, which is direct teaching costs. This is faculty and adjunct salaries only. And and overhead associated with that benefits things such as that. And then the margin is going to be the balance of that, and then the percentage would be the percentage of of the. Of the revenue, so that means in twenty nineteen with just without state aid, just tuition and fees, we brought in seventeen point six. We brought in seventeen point six million, it cost us thirteen point four, and the margin of that was four point two or twenty four percent margin, so. Twenty four percent, we, we want, we want this percentage to change. Uh, to go up as we go through the years, so as you can see in twenty twenty and twenty twenty one, those went down and then twenty twenty two, we're starting to see that shift back up. Um, now, if you add in the state aid tuition choice, that's going to change this dynamic significantly. Um, you can see now where we are at a fifty nine percent margin for those three years, and now we're sitting at a sixty four percent margin last fiscal year. So remember, we just finished fiscal year twenty three, or about to finish twenty three, so we're, this is a year uh in arrears uh that we're looking. So as we, as we add these different cost choices, um, we add instructional expenses, so this is. This is um, faculty and adjunct salaries plus departmental costs, so this would be the budgets for those departments. You see about a percentage, uh, additional percentage of that margin goes towards those costs. Uh, as we continue to add uh release time, which is uh what we. Use to uh do some of the administrative work at the academic level that we need to have done, department chairs, things such as that. That adds another layer of um, cost to, to us to run academics. And then the contribution margin is kind of where we kind of look at then our true cost uh, which takes it all the way up and through, including the dean's uh salaries. So uh dean salaries, departmental costs and um, and um faculty salaries. Uh, that puts us uh from twenty nineteen from a fifty one percent margin to twenty twenty two to a fifty four percent margin, so we looked at it last time, we were at that fifty percent margin. Uh, we can see those trends are changing in, in a positive direction. Any questions about that at this point? Yes.
How did they get to margin choice? How did they get that figure?
Okay, so again, this teaching cost is just all the salaries, so they, they took in the actual salaries for full time and adjunct faculty. And the benefits, so the full overhead of salaries, instructional expenses is going to add departmental. Cost to that. Overhead, uh, release time in addition to that, and then this contribution margin adds then the, the dean's salaries and into that, so that's.
About the margin choice.
Yeah, that's, that's. The margin choice here.
Yes, yes.
So that is the revenue minus the cost, that is the margin choice. And remember, this is just state aid uh and tuition, so this would not include any other funding sources for the college. Yes.
So the last three cost choices that you said have been added, what are they adding into the equation?
Okay, so instruction and academic support, uh, this would include all of academics to include libraries. Um, our, um, our course uh management and uh curriculum management folks uh and everything really under the academic org chart, so we add that layer. Then, you know, that adds an additional layer of cost to the college. Um, and then you add student services, which would be uh Bill and Jessica's area. Um, that's another additional layer of cost choice, and then from my understanding is uh, this would be all of the general institutional costs. Plus the uh facilities cost, um, so that would add an additional layer in that, then that comes that uh.
HR accounting.
Yeah, everything.
Second plus.
Did that include like insurance and other expenses? So are, are there any expenses the college incurs that wouldn't be captured in that last?
In the fund structure, if they're looking at.
So now, when we go to the negative, is that, that would be? What was given into resources, because this is only handling operating funds?
Doesn't include taxes. That many taxes.
So you have the thirteen million local taxes on that, breaks even more or less.
You mean it doesn't include our real estate revenue?
That difference is one of those taxes.
Yeah, that's uh. We're in against territory here, so I'm not sure.
But sure, I think um. Think it pick up some things that are not on the.
Like appreciation.
No, the tool is not intended to. Sync up, reconcile exactly to the counter measure in the budget that we didn't submit to give. A way of looking at trends.
Yeah, and, and so I think we could also, uh, we'll shift different uh tab here, which is our course economics tab, and we're gonna keep that same. That same tuition choice, which is tuition plus state aid. And that kind, that, just that straight contribution margin up to including the dean's, um, the dean's level, which gives us that sixty four percent. Um, average, and uh, what, what this will show then is we can look at it by division, so we can see for our STEM division. We're trending again positive from, from twenty nineteen, um, from in um, in health, uh. Humanities, social and behavioral sciences, we're trending up as well there, and um. He- health, education and public safety, we're trending positive there after a dip uh in fine arts, uh, we're trending positive there. Um, and then this is the one that um, I think is a little bit misleading, this is our per uh, our um. Personal development classes, our PD courses, um, I think how they actually built the financial model for this is, is a little inaccurate. So I do want to, I want to just say that we did a deep dive on that and, and we certainly don't um, don't lose, it doesn't cost us that amount of money to run those classes. Um, so we, we do want to go back and work with them on hopefully fixing some of these small uh details. Uh, but I think uh, as, as you alluded to, um. Um, we can look by campus, so we can look at the same thing, so we can say. Uh, in our online margin trends, uh, we've seen that tick up quite a bit since um. Since twenty nineteen, you can see we have a fifty nine percent to a sixty three percent margin, and remember, our overall average was fifty four percent. Um, and over, we're seeing that kind of coming back now post COVID. Uh, as, as we kind of see from our enrollment trends, most students shift, a lot of students shifted online, obviously during COVID, we were completely online. A lot of students stayed online and some students are starting to come back to our campus um, physical locations. Um, El Dorado starting to trend back as well post COVID. Uh, our other Butler County, this is our, our high school locations where we're actually teaching classes at the high school locations. Uh, so this one again is trending back as well. Uh, Rose Hill, you know, you're gonna see that one starting to uh, uh, it's, it's declining slightly, I think uh, we're, we're trending. Beginning to trend back up uh at Rose Hill, uh, and you mentioned Flint Hills, uh, we're there, we're trending up uh, the highest we have been from a, from a margin percentage. Uh, last fiscal year, uh McConnell, for some reason, only has one year on here, so I think that's something we need to go back. And, and look at where that's trending, um, correction's gonna be a little bit uh diluted as well, since we offered minimal courses there last fiscal year. And our other community sites are um, our early childhood placement sites in, in Sedgwick County. So this puts a number to those, so that puts a tuition and a cost and a margin dollar amount to those. And again, you can see that percentage and then the overall margin of fifty four percent, which would be up from the um forty, sorry, the fifty one percent. In twenty nineteen, uh, so I think uh, these analysis uh also will, you, you know, we can look at. You know, you get in the weeds, I'm not sure it's helpful, uh, you know, we are, are probably our strongest um, courses are math. English, uh, behavioral science, uh, nursing, uh, et cetera, so you, you know, kind of the ones that you, you, you would expect to have um, at the top of those um, margins.
But those are classes taken in all degree forms too.
These are all, all math courses, uh, English course, yeah, it's, it's, it's by department at that point. Um, and again, you could, we can do uh tiered versus non-tiered, we can look at that, which would be. Non-tiered would, uh, tiered would be all of our CTE courses, so as you can see, that's trending uh, six percent uh higher than uh twenty nineteen. And uh, our non-tiered courses are trending up three percent, so uh, I think, I think this is all uh positive information to show that. The colleges is making adjustments that are needed to ensure sustainability and keeping uh in line with, with those enrollment declines. We're actually becoming more efficient um during the process.
Is this something you can send to us, like screenshots as a?
I, I can do PDFs, yeah, I can, I can extract PDFs, but.
That would be great.
I don't know what you would want, so if you can send me. What, what exactly, because there's tons of.
Charts, I think, I, I have to pick up, there are some charts, I think we went down that were showing like um. That looked like enrollment versus staffing and that kind of thing, and then that. Uh, the average class size, I find that interesting too, I mean, I just. I don't know, to me, an average size of eleven seems pretty small, yeah, see, you've got your class size going down and your faculty percentage going up.
Yeah, I'm, I'm not sure I agree with their class size trending as well, I think you saw, we, we have a different ratio that we, we look at.
The I F S ratio is eighteen.
I F S ratio is eighteen combined, and what, I F S is the federal, or like how they. Define it as part time and full time faculty, you have to find different just places to consider, in this case, with the universe. Numbers, students, and that is special environment, so this is, this is, this is the thing that everyone will be everywhere. Specialized standards. Both of them are legitimate.
I have a question, how do you meld, like we went from like one sixty two to one thirty eight, one forty thousand credit hours on those years? So we lost fifteen percent of our credit hours, but this is all kind of a rosy overall picture of a.
Well, I think the rosiness is that we're, we're reacting to those reductions in a, in a, in a efficient way. Um, even though we have decreasing credit hours, we have.
But our expenses are going up, our insurance is going up.
Right, but, but this is an academic, this is strictly looking at courses.
I understand, just how is this helpful in a business that's? In trouble, just to say, ah, it looks pretty good, and how do we get into it more and find out what? What do we need to focus on to turn it around?
I, I'm not sure I understand the question.
Well, we presented your middle, middle line. Data that shows everything's pretty decent. That's just a giant, you know, thirty thousand foot view, but it's not that helpful.
Well, I think dynamically, I mean, you're gonna have programs, no matter what college you're at, you're gonna have programs that are, are highly, you know, they're, they're, they're generate. Great deal more revenue than some programs that don't, we also have a few programs in here, our diesel program, for example, is gonna show a huge. Percentage of uh negative margin because we, we started it that fiscal year, but you know, when we see this next year, that shift is gonna change. Um, I, so we should, what we should be seeing is by next year, that margin percentage should, should increase when we, well, this fiscal year we're about to end. But we won't have that data for a while, so the, the, the decisions we're making, the course reductions. Um, th- those types of things, adding programs that are um, that are sustainable and uh, looking at growing enrollment in those discrete areas, so you know, our enrollment is growing online. Our, our high school enrollment is growing, and of course, our uh, our enrollment at the correctional facility is growing, so that's going to be an offset.
If I can add one that we know on that answer. One other thing that, that we did find out, and I think it's a good thing she's put now, is that in fiscal twenty twenty two. The state did, according to their form, the state did find us where it was. So that did, I'm sure that, that affects the same, so I believe in. Uh, but again, I mean, that's in the past, they've funded, funded us by sixteen, seventeen percent this year. Yeah, right, we really wanted this about there, so that it. And for the next question comes up, is there a guarantee they'll need it next year?
That's a guess every year.
I saw there was a book on there for athletics, is that, is that we saving that for a different time?
Uh, I, I don't think that would be the same thing you guys are gonna look at.
Yeah, I think we're doing that.
Uh, we can, we can click on it.
If you've got a different plan, when we're gonna address it, I don't want to.
I'm not sure what it's gonna show, uh, to be honest.
I don't think this is the same thing as the separate athletics mod.
No, this is a sep- yeah, the athletics model is separate than this, so this is, I'm not even sure what this is showing. Uh, I guess whether they were athletes or not.
Hard to tell. So what, is it June work session that we'll talk, we were talking about doing the athletic stuff at the June?
Yeah. Any other questions or comments?
Where's the softball nationals? Is that down in Alabama this year?
Hey.
We did, we did an announcement.
So from, from fall of twenty nineteen to fall of twenty twenty two, um, overall, the number of sections. That we offered, we did, we reduced by twenty one point seven percent. Uh, the overall spring sections from that same period, we reduced by twenty three point four percent, so that's where we're, you know, we're trying to follow those enrollment. Decline trends by offering less classes, um, so we're, I think we're pretty close to following that trend of enrollment, which would then. Uh, reduce our costs uh from an ac- from academics, or this is strictly an academic cost analysis.
Um, should we talk about insurance? Do you want to do a quick, just brief, high level overview of what you know about insurance?
Okay, so we've been in renewal discussions with IMA, which is our broker for our health insurance and our health package. And our ni- initial renewal came in at a twenty three point nine percent increase. Which was equivalent to one million, one hundred and twelve thousand, four hundred and fifty one dollars up per year. So um, after they picked me up off the floor, then um, we dug in a little bit deeper, um, our. Stop loss premium would go up about three hundred and thirty thousand dollars over what it was this year. And our claims funding is where they really um, have anticipated the greatest amount of increase. For us next year to be about twenty one percent, so um. They're projecting that the, the current claims that we have, that are high cost claimants are going to continue. And that some situations will warrant additional cost and certainly um. Just increase in what it costs to get medical care in general, right? So um, when they disclosed that kind of picture to us, I asked them to please go out to bid. And see if they could find a um, better alternative to Blue Cross Blue Shield, ASO, which is administrative services only, we are self-funded. And um, so they could not get a bid from Aetna, Aetna did not feel they had a competitive financial bid for us. And so they went to um, United Healthcare, which did have a competitive bid for us. So there, you know, to get our business, obviously, they're gonna cut low the first year or two before they'll start increasing you like crazy, but. Um, their bid came in at about five hundred and sixty thousand over what we're paying now per year. But that does come with some, what they call disruption, okay? So disruption amounts to, in changing to a new carrier, you've got a new formulary. Or prescription drugs, you also have a new network for your physicians, your specialty doctors. Um, chiropractors and mental health therapists, they're all gonna be a little bit different, so. I did ask them for um, a final analysis, if they could provide me what that disruption looks like. Uh, to see if that is like large scale disruption for our, our members. Or if it's, you know, something that might be manageable. And I did get that information uh last Friday. And uh, I've been, while, while I've been looking over it, I still have a lot of questions to ask them. Regarding some of the data that they're showing me uh, to really kind of make an informed decision about that. We did increase our budget dollars that we thought we would be needing based on an initial discussion I had. We did increase our budget dollars that we thought we would be needing based on an initial discussion I had with IMA couple, about a month or month and a half ago uh from, we had originally budgeted and increased for two hundred and fifty thousand. We increased that to five hundred thousand. Um, and so that is in your budget um update from previous. And um some of the, you know, obviously initial work I've done with this, um you know, it, it's, it's a matter of, you know, cost sharing, of course, with the employees, but trying to keep it reasonable and and something affordable for them as well, as well as for the college. So uh hopefully tomorrow we'll have further discussions with IMA to kind of understand this disruption model. Uh, but it is a decision that we're going to have to make fairly quickly. Uh, I, we do have, you know, things that we have to prepare for such as the negotiations and things like that to be able to tell them what the rate's gonna be that the college is going to offer to pay. So um just wanted to kind of give you that update on where we're at with that.
Well, their disruption information identified providers that are no longer in that work, that employees are having.
Yeah.
Those are seeing somewhat different if they wanted to cover the services.
Yes. So for example, and, and again, just at first, their top, they listed their top ten disruptive providers. And a lot of them are chiropractors, speech pathologists, psychologists. So it's more of the specialty realm. There were probably just a couple of family medicine doctors. Um, one, a, a particular hospital that's out of town, apparently that someone has family member that is um seen there.
They've looked at our provider list, they've identified whose names show up the most.
Those are the top ten, correct, of disruption. And then, you know, there's other things, of course, that, that might be medications or um individual providers on a one-on-one basis. But right now, it looks like there are about four hundred and eleven claims that were filed underneath those top ten providers.
I don't have any plans.
Um twenty thousand. They have about ten thousand five hundred and forty-one claims they haven't been able to analyze yet. So they're still working through that. But um so there's that information to be known. Um, some of my initial estimations are that um there are some offsets that we might have with RX rebates that we get that will help kind of offset some of those costs in our, our um reserves. Um, so um we'll be coming to you with some more numbers on that very soon.
The three thirty on the stock gap is just what it will take, the level we are right now.
Um, we will, we are at um it, it's an increase of a certain percentage over where we're at. But yes, it is a seventy-five thousand dollar level. We went up to that last year. Uh, we were at twenty-five percent or twenty-five thousand dollar stop loss, and then we went up to seventy-five thousand. So we paid the first seventy-five and then it goes into the stop loss after that.
And to stay in, in first seventy-five, we have to pay.
Hundred and thirty thousand dollars a year for the insurance.
Okay.
Yeah, they did give us an option to go to a hundred thousand as our gap stop, stop gaps, but that would keep it just about where it's at now, the price for the insurance. I don't feel as comfortable with that based on the amount of additional money we spent going to seventy-five thousand. So I'm sorry, the initial stop gap was at fifty thousand. We went to seventy-five this year, last year, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, uh, one of the other things that was on um that we kind of pushed off to this work session was some discussion about the wording in the board bylaws about um complaints about, about uh complaint processes. And I don't, I, my meetings are kind of mixed up now, and so I don't remember now exactly when um this first came up, but the decision was to kind of wait until the June work session to talk about this and then possibly have this on the or I mean, the May work session and then possibly have it on the June agenda for uh board action. So I think Linda, this was originally proposed by you. Uh, it's been probably a couple of months ago, maybe now, right?
Yes.
So I had the two issues. One was that um you know, we talked at one time about this handling complaints and the word should kept coming up and gave leeway. So I just said, what about shall? And then my other uh issue is in reference to the request for information under um think of um
or Cora, Cora.
And whether uh it's just open-ended and you can ask for anything you want and we do the work or do we look at what's being requested and determine whether we feel it's justified to spend that much time and so forth for it or with the thought that anybody can request Cora if they're willing to pay for it. I mean, that's what our policy says. You're going to pay. It doesn't exclude anyone. So I think those are two different issues.
Yeah, had a little bit of discussion about the Cora and information requests at the last board meeting. So. But I, but I don't know that there was anything definitive that was decided.
As everybody says, it is not. This request again.
It, it doesn't address it at all.
Also, the citizen as well, some of our employees, but we have employee.
Well, I think it makes sense to address it. I mean, sure, whatever the answer is.
I don't care what you gotta do. You can't mandate my free speeches by putting a shout on me. If you wanna have board bylaws that are just violated, that you can threaten HLC for the next ten years, go ahead, but that's a dumb idea. You can add some wording that's different, but you can't put a shout on to me. You have a majority, you can do it if you'd like, but I think it's.
If anybody's interested, I have some copies that I'd like to incorporate at the same time as far as change to the bylaws. And um what I'd like to consider is adopting a policy very similar. We'd have to change words from Butler County Commissioners to Butler County College employees, but they actually have a really good policy on political activities that are not allowed. And they have a good policy on ethical conduct.
Let's, let's stay focused.
So if anybody liked that, uh, I understand that we're talking about that, but I'd like to introduce these since this is a work session.
Then we'll put it in the next work session and we'll talk about it. We had, we've been talking about these issues for several months and they've been pushed to talk about it.
Fine, of course, it's whatever.
Yeah, that's fine. I, that's, that's, I don't have any problem considering it.
It's the, it's what the county's already adopted, but it's very specific. And one thing I'd really like to see is the specifics that are related to political support. So that you really can't spend any time during the day as an employee um garnering political support for a particular candidate.
Do you have copies you wanna pass out to?
Well, I do, but you said no, because.
Oh, I said, we don't wanna talk about it right now. I didn't say we can't pass them out to.
Yes, I have plenty of copies. Here's the ethics.
You can read it.
Yes, that would be, that would be perfect. And then here is.
I mean, Shelby, you, you might. My, my thought on the, on the complaint thing, I, I understand where you're coming from. The problem I have right now should is a hole that's so big, it means nothing. And that was established.
You're not applying complaint, you're not.
I died in severity of whatever. But how do we get to somewhere that, how do we get to something that you would support? Because what, there needs you and I will disagree on the whole First Amendment thing, but we have a fiduciary obligation, the college, when we're sitting in this role. And that obligation at some point, I think is going, we owe a duty to let the college be able to take care of concerns.
Right.
And when that came up.
Share duty to the taxpayers who we represent, who the college takes.
Now, we all fiduciary duty to college. Not fiduciary.
What are we there for? We're here to monitor how our funds are spent.
Thank you. That we're not going down that legal rabbit hole.
Fiduciary just means on someone else's.
But it, but you have a legal, no, it means a legal obligation. We have a legal obligation that we can be, we can be liable for not doing our job with respect to the college. I don't think there is a basis for a taxpayer to sue you and say, you didn't do what I thought you was gonna do in representing me as a taxpayer. Because there's no one taxpayer that speaks for everybody. Um. Again, but I mean, my, my point here is I, I don't disagree that we ought to further define.
We have only four signatures on that on since on the wall, because you guys won't word it in a way that we can all agree on.
Well, I.
Let's just take it or leave it.
Well, let's go to that, then, then suggest some wording changes that you would support.
Oh, I think.
Because sitting back.
Wiggle room and the wording changes if somebody's not mandated on how they speak.
Well, I brought these for me.
If the end result is we have a policy that, that each individual trustee can decide, I'm gonna tell Dr. Qualler I'm not, and it's all in my mind whether I am. Then we're not gonna reach an agreement, because that's where we are right now. Should, should means nothing. And we established that with, you know, a few months ago, and we talked about it with, in terms of a complaint. Should means the trustee decides if they want to or not, and we need something more than that. I, I don't disagree. It doesn't necessarily mean.
But at the same time, Julie would have faced censure or whatnot for, for should. And you did the shall not speak to the board, and you did, we had no problem. I mean, there's nothing at all. So it's not, they're not being treated the same.
Yeah, let's talk about the same, let's talk about the same bylaw. We're talking about.
I'm talking about this.
We're talking about.
Through this last year. I get it. I will look at it and see there's some wording that I could accept. And I'll send it your way and you can legal it up and send it my way. We can, no, we, we can't.
What I'd like to avoid is we get to the June board meeting.
Right.
And we're in the same spot we are right now.
That's what I'm saying this now.
Claimed because the four to three majority votes for a change that, and I agree with you. I don't think we ought to change it to something that we can make it better than, than what's being proposed right now, but we need something with more teeth than what we have right now.
But the bottom line, the bottom line is specifically when it relates to student complaints, that's just one section of complaints. We have to keep a log of student complaints. We have to. It's required by the Higher Learning Commission. They looked at our reports when they were here for the site visit to see that we're keeping them and to see how we're, you know, managing and, and uh resolving those complaints. We have to keep that as part of our accreditation. Now, you've brought up the example that if somebody, you know, in church is complaining to you about um, you know, uh, the college, you know, something that the college is happening, that's not, that's not really a critical kind of thing that you can, you can have those conversations, you can talk to those people. But will you let me finish, please? But if it's a specific complaint that relates to an academic concern for a student, an ethical issue, uh, something that a faculty member or a staff member is doing wrong, that's violating a policy or a procedure that's in place. Those are the things that we have to know about because we have to then follow our own internal, whether they're personnel processes, whether they're grievance processes for our students, whether it's something that happens through academics, we have to be able to address those by policy.
It doesn't say anything that's a violation of policy. I told you before, I had the teacher take me out to lunch. Wasn't happy that the department's running, that was stopped, blah, 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 blah. You wanna know who was it? It's like, it's none of your business. They could tell you if they'd like. They wanted to speak to me privately. I was under no obligation to pass that information along. I don't have any power to some board member. But I can listen to somebody who wants to, to complain to me.
Yeah, we all do. I listen to complaints all the time.
Says if like someone complains, I have to share it.
You need to at least.
Violation, that is brought to our attention, that's a violation, blah, blah, blah. It needs to be brought to, yeah, that I can agree with, but not a blanket statement of a complaint shall be said.
You, you're an adult, you're a business person, you're in the community, you know, you know, as we all do, what a true complaint is, what a true concern is that should come to somebody's attention at the college. We can all filter that through our own you know, experiences and our interactions with people. What we're asking through this is for and the Rose Hill thing is a very specific example and a very good example. That was very definitely a concern that should have come to our attention because it was academic related. It was a student concern and apparent concern that should have come to us to resolve immediately or to start to work to resolve immediately. That's a whole lot different than somebody, you know, taking you to lunch and come.
Yeah, this is, but what's, what was the resolution of that? The college went down there and told them, take it or leave it.
No, we didn't.
They came here, that's how it came across to them in this meeting. And I even said, so at the meeting, it's like, this is kinda making me angry how we're treating this parent.
It was not take it or leave it. What we, what we identified to them, the, the college, the school district has the choice for the classes that are taught. The school district can decide whether they want those classes taught or not. We were not saying to them, we're pulling out if you, if you decide this one way or not. That's not what we said. We were indicating.
We've presented with not. Very nice.
And you're getting that second hand or third hand, correct? You weren't there.
Meeting here, when they were here, I was very offended how we treated that.
Oh. The pastor.
Not the pastor, the mom.
The mom, okay.
And I explained my position.
I don't remember that we offended you.
But we listened to her.
We listened to her.
I don't.
I expressed it. You could watch the meeting if you'd like to see my response. I sat such in the meeting. And then can be the same thing as a teacher. If you're mandating that I write something on a test that I feel really wrong. There's not, or you can do married advantages, there's two sexes. I write that on a test, teacher says there's four genders. I say there's two sexes. But the teacher says, say what I say, or you won't get an A. This is an institution of learning. We should be able to have conversations and learn, disagree. And then just be nice to the people that are, are customers. I'm just saying you can't nail down my freedom of speech because in the way you have it stated, I won't vote for it. I'm just bringing that up now before it comes to the meeting next month.
Then I'm sure it'll pass because you have a majority.
But if it's written in a. So if I gave a test and, and I told the, the students that this is the answer that you should answer, and if you do not answer it, you will get it wrong.
Okay, two plus two is five. If you don't put five, you will not get an A in my class. The, the teacher showed a method and what she.
That's not really how that story spread out.
But that's. You guys can watch the video. I mean, I can go timestamp and bring it here. We can play it next month if we.
We, we've all watched it.
Student was required.
We were told in the meeting that they would not get an A. I can watch the video again at timestamp for you.
They don't get an A if they don't score.
The parent reported. I don't think that's what.
It was stated at the meeting.
At what?
How will timestamp it? Hey, K. Land, we'll work this out next week. Do we really have?
But yeah, there's.
I got plenty of time to listen to the meeting.
Well, it's, we're not, it's not.
It will say it, it was said in a lawyerly way. Then. I'll, I'll get the timestamp and we can.
Well, that's, I mean, I think that we're kind of far afield.
We are.
The point to the complaint policy is I think we, we need something better than what we have.
And if we can continue discussing, I'd like to make some comments.
Can I finish?
Just letting you know.
When I stop talking, that'll get you.
Okay, I'll raise my.
We can do better than what we have right now, correct? And if, if the response from your side is going to just shoot down what's proposed with no alternatives, then we're not gonna get something better. And that's when we're gonna end up with something that you don't like.
And I just said, five minutes ago, what Dr. Pro presented in a more detailed way. That's heading in the right just, just direction of what a policy violation is, what this is, that, what I should be required to pass on. That's much more acceptable to me than just you shall speak this way if someone complains. So if we can put some legalese to it that I can agree to.
It sounds like what we need is a better definition of the term complaint. Is that?
An extremely detailed version.
I don't know that you can cover every little thing in writing, but we could say, for example, these things.
Something that would affect the college or yada, 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 or teacher or safety or, you know, common sense stuff that I can agree with.
And so do you want me to draft that or do you want to draft that?
I did not ask you to direct it.
Okay, so you're going to draft it?
I didn't say I was going to. I said I could present something divorce and he could present something back to me. We could possibly come to a consensus or not.
Well, and I want me, yeah, well, I guess we can't, we don't wanna be negotiating through email, but I think it would be helpful, Dr. Pro, to know what areas we think there are that the college has. Okay, legal, I use legal generically. You, you mentioned the student example. What areas does the college have exposure, whether it be up to HLC or something else?
Okay.
For not having those complaints turned.
Okay.
I think that might be a starting.
Okay.
I don't know. I think I should make my comment first, cause I.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Um, my comments along the line of if this, this policy still doesn't address what happens if you get a legitimate question from the constituent that says, hey, uh, I don't wanna do anything with this. I'm just venting. Uh, I don't really want you to do anything. Uh, and I'd really like you to keep it to yourself. I mean, you expect me to uh, to violate their confidence and I will not. So just telling you, no matter what.
Well, that, that's not what happened with Rose Hill. You knew the parent was going to do something.
Yes, she outlined everything.
Simply, I want you to know and I want nothing.
She outlined everything that she was planning on doing. And it was pretty much what our, what our uh authority regulations really are and our steps to. The only thing she didn't have, she had all the colleges side of what her steps needed to be, but she didn't have a good idea. The only thing she didn't have, she had all the colleges side of what her steps needed to be, but she didn't have a good idea about the Royal Seals side at all. And we didn't provide her with that. We as a district, we didn't provide her with what her alternatives and steps were. There, but she did have an idea what to do on the college side, like contact the people that she needed to contact.
But you knew she wasn't going to contact that.
No, I knew she was.
She contacted the Sentinel. She didn't contact. I mean, that's what started all this was the college finds out about it because the Sentinel reporter called.
So you expect me to automatically believe.
I don't expect you. I'm just talking about the.
Because I was told that she did.
And I didn't. She didn't talk to me until after.
I'm not talking about you. I'm talking about her first steps were to contact the counselor at the school. That's the only she knew about. And then they recommended that she called the the dean, the associate dean, first the teacher.
That's not what the counselor indicated to us. She indicated to me that she was, it was recommended that she get a hold of a trustee, and she got a hold of you. And then I heard about it through Patrick Richardson at the Sentinel, and that was the first then opportunity that I had. After Patrick Richardson contacted her and told her to get a hold of me, that's the first time I had a chance to talk to her then, so.
Well, I'm glad it all worked out, but you really didn't resolve for her. I mean, I I know she took all the steps. She outlined them to me when she made the phone call. What she was going to do, which included the contacts of everyone I already listed. But that just. I'm not trying to say it wasn't good enough, but. You know, she really had no redress. You know, at all.
Did the student finish the course or did he not?
Yeah, he finished the course. He'd already paid at that point, and it's too late to withdraw after a certain time, so.
I would I would say they did not follow our appeal process, so we did. That 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 particular case did not follow our appeal process, which is which is our policy.
Yeah, I need to see that, because if I ever have another call, the first thing I want to do is ship him a. A copy of that process. So if you wouldn't mind providing a copy with that, that'd be great. But anyway, another thing.
I'm sorry. It's on the website. It's in the catalog.
It's in our course catalog and in our student handbook.
That's employee handbook. Okay, so the employee handbook is different. It's not gonna have.
Yeah, because that's a student policy.
So it sounds like we need to, I need to maybe provide a little bit of information on. Some broader definition of complaints, examples of complaints, so we can. Try to see about. Moving this forward, right?
And something else that wouldn't hurt to have is a legal opinion.
Legal opinion on what?
On whether or not these are things that we can put in a.
We can ask Ray. Ray reviewed all of the policies and the bylaws and everything when they were being reviewed and possibly revised the last time, so we could. We can put this in any changes in front of him again. He would be the first person that we would show him to to see if they're legal.
Shall we still have a comment? Are you done, Julie?
For now. Thank you.
So from a HR perspective or from an employee relations perspective, honestly. And as a person who has listened to many a complaint over many, many years. If if somebody has a legitimate complaint and we are not given the opportunity to address it. What that does is continues to lead to an unhappy employee. Or a practice that maybe needs to be addressed so that that can be corrected. And what I tell people is. I. I want to know. I want to know what the what your complaint is, and I want to be able to help you fix it. Because if we don't know. It never changes. Or it can't be changed. So when you get a complaint that a teacher is unhappy about something or doesn't like the way something is done, perhaps they won't come to us. And so if we don't have an opportunity. To be able to address that need or that complaint or whatever it might be, then that just continues to go on and look like Butler doesn't care. But that's not the case, because we really do want to be. Thoughtful and helpful when people have complaints. We also have a process for complaints. And sometimes people some bring something to me, Julie, just like you say, and they say, I don't want to do anything. I don't want you to say, I just need somebody to vent to. I just want to get this off my chest, and then I'll be fine. Well, that doesn't work for me. Then what doesn't work for me is that I have an obligation to you. And. To make sure that these things aren't happening in our environment. And make sure that I can help assist, that it doesn't happen to somebody else, whatever that complaint might be. On the far side of that, then you have a legal obligation. To make sure that we're upholding all of our non discrimination and anti harassment. And all of those type of things that take place in a work environment. So if you're understanding that you get a complaint and it seems to you like something about harassment or something about. Discriminatory practices. We need to know that information so that we can react and respond and make sure it's investigated properly. I'm all about trying to protect somebody's privacy, and I do that to my very best ability, but at times it doesn't always. Work that way. You know, we try to be, it was very discreet and. To keep things very confidential, but sometimes you have to investigate. So that's my two cents worth.
I agree. That's two different scenarios.
It is.
Something that's. Discriminatory or dangerous. I mean, that's a different level of somebody not liking how things are done.
But in even that, if somebody doesn't like the way something's done, it'd be great if we kind of understood that.
Shouldn't have to go tattle on them. If they wanted to tell the administration.
Yeah, and and you certainly could say, have you tried talking to your administrators about that and. And, you know, so at that point, that problem does never get resolved. Because nobody brings.
Mandate that I have to tattle on somebody who wants to talk.
I'm not saying, I'm not saying I should mandate it. I I mean, to me, I think it would be the proper thing for you. To do.
Differentiation between those two points, the something egregious and something. Yeah, we all work with people. It's all. There's gonna be complaints now and again, but.
There there will be, and so if the better we know about them, the better we can make it a better place.
Speaking of complaints, Shelby, do you have any, Julie, do you have any idea? In what book would I find? How you process complaints about the administration? Well, let's say you had a, let's say you had a. Let's say you had a staff member, a teacher who wanted to make a complaint about the dean or something. How do the, how, where, what is the process? Is it, is that what this is to?
I can't see it, but.
No.
The five point O, where is that?
Well, it's in the handbook. Maybe in your play handbook. There there are several different. Methods or ways that an employee or. Somebody can can make a complaint. There's a grievance procedures. And there's an ethics review. There's a lot of different things depending on what it is, but it's all outlined in the employee handbook, yes.
Quietly taking all this in.
Quietly taking it all in, thinking great observation.
We are, we are past six, not that we can't stay late, but.
Well, we get a few more things we need to.
Oh, we do. Well, that's.
So board evaluation, right?
Mary Martha? Yes.
I think you're up.
I think it was back, well, it was last year when. He decided to look at other board evaluations. And. Have two to look at. I think these are very well written.
All the stuff for him over here.
Did you take one of these things for her to a copy of this?
I can grab by right by her house on the way home. The dinner mail logs.
I'd like for you all to look at this.
And if you have an extra one, I'll take it, but that's.
Did you ever come up with anything for the presidential evaluation?
No, I was just doing trust.
You you folks, you folks, we'll talk about mine. You folks decided on my goals in September, so we'll talk about mine in a second.
I'm just asking Mary Martha, because she was actually looking at some evaluations at other colleges.
You got copies of some presidential evaluations. I think that you gave us.
Yeah, so I'd like for each trustee to look this over. And. You know, since there's already two out there that look good, this one, I can't remember who came, it came from the Garden City Community College.
And Barton. Looks like the other one's from Barton.
Anyway, look it over and see what you think. I don't think we need to invent the wheel again. We need to get this done in July, I believe. Is that right?
I think last, I think last year, the board evaluation was done in July. Is that correct?
Yeah.
And Jennifer said she could get on the computer. So please look that over. Thank you.
Thank you, Mary Martha. So from a timing standpoint, this is something that we would. Is this a, is this something that we have to officially and like make a decision on, or do we just decide through a work session consensus, this is our process?
Well, I think what you need to do is decide which one of these you want to use. Because I'm assuming, having not looked through these, probably some of the questions are a little bit different. Are they? Mary Martha?
Really not bad at all. In fact, Johnson Community College uses the. Who am I trying to say? The nationwide.
Well, the ACCT. That's the one that most all of them have been have been developed from is ACCT standards. Yeah. That's where ours came from, too. There there's a lot of similarities.
Yeah.
It looks like Garden Cities is from the same way.
I just don't like that part on the left hand side. Where it says. How do you as a trustee feel about it? And then on the other side, it says, how does the board feel about it? You know what I'm talking about?
Independence. Yeah, I think.
Didn't care for that one.
It's easier. I think it's easier when the board stuff is separated out and then it's individual trustees' information is. They're kind of in separate spots, yeah.
Just how our current.
That's the current. Yeah, that's the correct format.
Talk about it next time.
Well, well, you need to, you'll need to probably approve one or the other. Is that?
What you just handcapped, I do it. It's just like what Julie handed out. I'm not gonna say I.
Well, I think that, you know, that was my question is what what timeframe?
We can discuss it next month.
We plan to be approving it.
We can have a board discussion item. Following one of the, we all agree on the board discussion item.
Just typically, typically, the board does the evaluation in July at some point in time, so. But, you know, if you want to talk about it next month and and do some sort of.
What about, what about finalizing it at June's work session? So that we could.
It'd have to be an actual meeting.
It had, yeah, we can't get a work session. I think let's just talk about it. I'm hoping we can agree on one. And go with it. And then if you don't care for it this year, then maybe next year, you could be in charge of finding one.
I think we plan to put it on the action list for June, and then we don't.
Action or discussion.
I think action.
Okay.
We've got.
And then if you don't.
Got time to look at it. If we don't.
And you don't have to take action on it then. Yeah, that's what you're saying. Okay. If you need more time to figure it out. Okay.
We can move to amend anything we don't like.
Um, so I wanted to put my, these are the goals that you folks approved, and here's an extra one for Kim. Okay, you can add to Kim's pile.
Somebody have a paperclip.
We can find one.
Here, we can have this.
These are the goals that you approved last September of mine and what's what's in boldface, and we talked about these with. Ken Burke and Mary Spildy when they were here. I gave you examples of some of the metrics that could be used to measure those goals. The actual evaluation, they kind of indicated would be. Written, so it's the overarching goal that you're, you know, that you're evaluating. I'll have my year end report ready to give to you that will address some of these examples of metrics, so you can see. What, you know, what what has happened under each of these. And again, the format last year was the goal, and then it was a Likert scale where you had an opportunity to identify. That five different choices for these. You strongly agree, you somewhat agree, you neither agree or disagree. You somewhat disagree, or you strongly disagree that the goals have been met. Jenna set it up in a. Electronic, you know, survey that came to you in electronic format, and then when it came back in, the results could all be compiled really easily, so. I'm suggesting that same. Format this year with the what what's bold face here would be the narrative for the goals. My, I think my contract says that my evaluation is supposed to be done in June. And so I would anticipate that. You know, it could be completed in June if we needed to wait until July work session to go through it. It would have to be done in executive session. We want to, you know, we want to do the evaluation in June and. You know, some of the June work session could be a special board meeting if we needed to with an exec session to go through the evaluation that. You know, you guys can kind of decide that, but I just wanted to put these back in front of you again. To let you know that that these would be the goals that I would be evaluated on this year. So thoughts, questions at all? Is that format still okay with the five choices for?
I would like to discuss it like we did last year. Either give us a couple beforehand, so it can all be informed.
The year end report, you mean?
Your evaluation.
The the this consolation of each individual.
And discuss it with you.
Oh, after everybody has filled it out. I see what you're saying. I'm sorry. I didn't understand that. Sure.
Without without a repeat of last year.
Okay, I just wanted to put this in front of you because of the time, the timeframe that it has to, should be done within.
And when, when, when are we, when are we gonna get your report that?
It'll come along. Well, it would come along when when Jenna sends out the. Survey or the evaluation, I would make sure you had that year end report same time. She won't, I'll, I can email it out to you, but. I I don't have it done yet, so. Oh, is Brynie doing it now? Okay, okay, so Brynie will do it. The only other thing that I had, Julie had a question that came through chatbot to the service desk and service desk back to us. About updating her picture on the website.
Yes, I've lost forty five pounds.
Well, and that's fine. I think we want to, the College of College. College Relations and Marketing is the one that oversees the website and manages the content and the standards and stuff, and so I would suggest that. I talked to Kelly today, and Rodney would be available before the. June board meeting if you want individual pictures taken again this year for update, and that way they'd all be consistent and. That all be taken by the same photographer, so. I would suggest and Kelly, Kelly felt like that was.
I sent him a picture.
Well, I would, I think Kelly would like the pictures on the website to be all of the same standard. And so rather than having, you know, seven other, six other pictures that have been taken by Rodney, who's a professional photographer, really. And and then.
It looks better.
I think it looks better. It looks more consistent, so Rodney's. We take him in April and I. Yeah, we usually take him in April, and the there was some limited discussion about, because the board members were still the same. It probably didn't need to be updated. But if you want individual pictures updated, Rodney will be available, and I'll send you the time. Okay?
Okay, that'd be great.
And then you can, you can, you know. Side whether if you want one taken, that's fine. If you don't, that's fine.
We're not talking about a whole new group picture.
I don't think so. Just individuals, if you want them. And and for clarification, marketing is the one that I think Rodney went through all of those pictures the last time and chose the ones that were. That. Touch them up a little bit. I didn't choose them. I didn't choose them to be put on the website. Rodney was the one that in College Relations, I think you guys looked at all of them, right? Yeah. So.
I'm kind of my beard's probably dark there last year.
Might be, you could.
You got time to fix that.
Four years ago, it's like, hey, it's almost.
Generation formula will fix it.
We'll send you time. It'll probably be like, you know, maybe, will he set up in the foundation office kind of area again like he did last time? Kelly, do you think?
Jennifer, thank you for the PDF. I don't know what's wrong with my. My computer, but it.
Are you gonna try and talk to him like that?
The wind file? My wife's computer won't open either or won't. Nah, it's running like crazy. Okay, because we had some other stuff to board books a couple of years ago.
Some of the board books you can't open.
No, a couple of years ago, I went through the same thing. It wouldn't work, wouldn't work, and then a PDF. Came maybe from somebody else. No, it worked. I don't know. I haven't had any trouble with board books for.
Okay.
Year and a half, so. But it was the same issue that I had.
Okay.
So. I'll blame Ken. All right, I appreciate it.
I don't think I have anything else.
Thanks, Eric.